Okay, next policy is Policy 505, Student Entrance Requirements. And I will hand this over to either Dr. Edwards or Director Herman.
There was very minimal changes to this, just cleanup language for blank sections.
I have one question, does this apply to preschool?
Because it looks like the policy was updated last in 2021. And annoying more about...
The preschool program and...
It says in their grades one through 12.
That's not preschool though.
Right.
Kindergarten has a separate...
Right, so I'm asking, does this policy apply to preschool, that's my question.
I do not believe so. Correct, Dr. Edwards, they have their different requirements that are different than K-12.
Okay, alright, so it is correct that it should be first through 12, or kindergarten and any other grade, first through 12? Okay.
Yep.
That's fine.
And just a clarification, preschool is community ed still, right?
Okay. That's why I was asking.
Except for early childhood special education reform regulations.
Okay, and then the next policy was completely rewritten and reformatted. Looks like it's the model policy, but I'll let Director Herman take it from there. And that was, go back up to the number, it's Policy 506.
So, also have Dr. Edwards joining here too. After reviewing of the policy, we did, this is another one that we have substantial amount of changes with the statute around. And when going through all of the statute changes, Dr. Edwards and his team felt to ensure that we were meeting every statutory requirement, it was best to utilize the MSBA model policy as a starting point. And then talked to the Policy Advisory Committee about using this as a starting point, but then taking the specific procedural pieces that exist, or specific, sorry, districts, pieces that existed in our current policy and copying them into those sections within here. So it is, the vast majority of it is the MSBA policy with sections from our previous policy copied and put into those sections. I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
Yeah, there are certain segments within the MSBA model policy that they want to ensure that they make sure that this aligns with your current practices. So we had our teams of administrators look at those particular components from our former policy and say which of those should go in the MSBA section where it says, make sure that you are, these locally align with your procedures that you have in place so that there isn't a disconnect between policy and procedures. And so, we have done that. And I know that we have, you have two principals on your policy advisory who then brought that back through the policy committee.
And I did send in a question that was going to repeat here anyways, and that's on the Code of Conduct, student responsibilities and those sections. Is that a direct copy of the Code of Conduct that students get anyways in their handbook?
So, in the student handbook, Dr. Edwards, remind, was it two years ago? That we...
Yes, it was going into last school year.
So, we have required pages for every single school to have in their student handbook that the district office organizes together. And it's copy pasted from the, the section of it is copy pasted into the handbook with the section saying, please read the whole, the whole policy in its totality with a link to it. But the student's responsibilities is copied into that section of that handbook to make sure that's included in every single student handbook in all of our schools, again with that link to read the entire full policy.
The live link, we went with the approach of having live links so that as policies were updated, they would be current.
Okay, so you go from the student handbook live link over to this?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't want to have to change it in multiple places and try to keep it up to date.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's what we didn't want to have to do either. So that was something we implemented at the start of last year, last school year.
And then some other big changes just in statute that we can highlight. If you go to Section 12, so the recent legislation changed quite a bit on the process and requirements whenever a student is removed from a classroom, whether it's for a class period for a full day or longer. So this language reflects those statutory requirements. And because of the additional requirements that we have to provide to the student if they're removed to the classroom and the reporting we need to do around that, it's vital that the building principal is involved in that decision from the start so we can ensure that all of the new requirements are being implemented and all the reporting requirements are being fulfilled. So it is a part of that new statutory language in there that speaks to that, that decision needs to be in consultation with the building principal. The building principal needs to be aware so that we can make sure that we're following through on all the statutory requirements that fall under the removal from classroom language, that, or removal from class, sorry, not classroom, but class language that has been changed in recent statute. So that whole section has significantly changed in areas based off of that new statute. So wanted to call that out, that was a significant change. And while there are some areas that we do have designee, like under C for example, under D, it can't be the designee, we really do need, whether it's assistant principal or dean or counselor, they do need to be in consultation with the principal before making that decision because if it's removed from a classroom for more than a period of one day, there's a lot more steps that we have to go through. And if the building principal isn't involved in that from the get-go, we would run a risk of not being, not being in compliance with the statute around that. So that's why you see the difference with C, for example, having the ability for a designee to be involved, or D, we don't have that designee listed, it does need to be the principal. Is that an accurate summary, Dr. Herman?
That is correct, yep.
Just to, under 11, removal of students from class, just A, and it's A, B, C, D, like maybe they should be 1, 2, 3, 4, going on underneath dismissal, those, yeah, those things I noted. One question that I had was, can I place this question at the bottom of, okay, dismissal? I had, if, when I'm looking at MSBA policy, or MSBA policy, the section E is called expulsion and exclusion procedures. They're, I don't, I'm not seeing them in this policy. And I don't know if I'm just confused because it's a long policy. But I don't find that section E, expulsion and expulsion procedures. And in MSBA policy, there's 1 through 21 are listed. And I'm just curious if that is by mistake, if they are on a separate policy, if they are procedure? I had that ordered to question.
What about expulsion under Pupille Fair Dismissal Act?
The PFDA guides that protocol. So, I don't know if it's a level of redundancy because we have to abide by that protocol for expulsion, that it's not called out separately in this policy. That it is mentioned as the procedure, the guiding procedure through MDE under S of, at 10, under Roman numeral 10 S. The Pupille Fair Dismissal Act, that guides all the protocol for expulsions.
I'm comfortable with that because we're citing the law.
And I'm just taking a look to see if it's...
I must have been missing something that...
The only thing I might suggest is that in the legal references, we should put in the, oh no, we have it in there, it's under, the statute cited as well. So I just want to make sure we covered it there as that legal reference. And that's under Section 20 at the very, very end, and that would be 1, 2, 4, 5, 6 or so down? 121A dot 40.
Okay, and that's totally fine. When, when, you know, looking through and compares, comparing, kind of doing the policy work, we kind of discussed this a little bit, and Emily, Doctor, or Director Herman helped me kind of iterate, like when looking at, we're adopting MSBA policy for parts of it, not all of it. And so when something is omitted, I appreciate the clarification. It has also been a question of mine since being new on the policy committee. I understand that sometimes we use MSBA policy, model policies, sometimes we don't. And I'm just curious if, when we're going through and asking the questions for formatting, if, my question is, is it something that we want to look to more? Aligning more with MSBA policy? Why do we on some and why not on others? Because when doing comparative work, you know, it's one thing, I think I shared at the last meeting, when I'm looking at policy, I can read through our district policy. And this past year, it's kind of what I've done. I haven't taken a lot of extra time to compare to MSBA or other districts. And so now, being on policy committee, I'm wanting to do a little bit more comparative, having a little bit more context. And so I am curious as, you know, as we move forward, is that something that we want to look at? I guess I would just like to understand from my own understanding, you know?
Director Herman, I think that's a question for the board. And I would say that because we're an independent school district, while I do agree that MSBA policy does do a great job of guiding and tying back to the law, we still are an independent school district. And so putting the right policies in place where we do see issues in our district or policies that we need to support different programs in our district that maybe a different district doesn't have, I do think, like, there needs to be that independence applicable to our district versus just a copy and paste of MSBA. And I think, you know, with this policy in particular, you know, so I don't, I can stop because I have some questions about this, but I wanted to just chime in there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because I agree. I think that there, that is very valid, right? Being an independent school district and having the ability. It's just, it's just been a question that has recently, you know, arose in my own thinking, you know, as I'm going through policy.
And that'll be, posing that question in policy committee while you're serving on there will be super helpful to network, I think.
So we did have the opportunity to talk to the Policy Advisory Committee when it started about the resource of MSBA versus the, just flat out using MSBA. And a really good example that just comes to my mind right away is we just got rid of 416. Per MSBA policy, it's a policy, it's a template out there. But based off of our legal guidance, based off of our size and resources, 416 doesn't best serve our district. You know, we don't employ our own bus drivers, for example, other districts do. Other districts are large enough that they have the opportunity to deploy a drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing policy with fidelity that doesn't open up for liability that we just don't have internally. So it was our recommendation and, you know, to strike that policy as an example. So I think when we had this conversation at the Policy Advisory Committee and Chair Franz and Director Vlazkowicz, please fill in if I'm misquoting here, but it really was that conversation that MSBA is a really great resource that we can look to. But we also can look at the historical context of how policies were developed in our district and then realign with where we're currently at as well. And take all of that, it does, it completely agree with you. It does make it really complicated when you're trying to compare, especially when we have some policies that are 1 and they have it as 4, and numbers are different, and my mind goes a little bit crazy. But I do feel like there's very strong rationale as to why it's come to be that way. And it's always this amazing resource that we can use and lean on.
Yeah.
And just be cautious that we don't, we don't overly lean on it and then don't have a policy that we can implement with fidelity within our district resources.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Totally right. And I would look at it as highly generalized because MSBA has to try to meet the needs of urban districts, suburban, rural districts, and everything in between with their policies so that people can utilize that as, I see it like a tree trunk. And then we can kind of grab what we need and create branches from there to suit our specific needs for our district.
The state does that.
Yeah.
So.
That's great.
Thank you.
Probably should have discussed that at policy committee, but I appreciate you.
That was a great conversation. So I have a question, I mean, this is, I know we've approved this policy actually a couple of times last year, but the more I've served time on the board and more of an understanding of policy, and this one, this one is, this one really touches me. And it touches me in a lot of ways in the fact that we do have discipline issues in our district. And so my question is, is do we have the right policy and guardrails in place to, how do you say? I don't, I don't, I don't know what the right word is to say, but to help with the discipline issues that are in our district. And the one thing is, I did try to pull up on MDA, MDE, the discipline data. And the latest report that they have on their website is only from 21, 22. So I know that we report discipline to MDE, it says in this policy every 30 days. I personally, as a board director, would like to see an updated report on discipline before we approve this policy. The same data that we send to MDE for the last three years so that we can see, are there things, you know, if fights have increased in the last three years, do we have the right things in place in this policy and in our procedures to help with that in our district?
Can you point out that 30 days?
Um, yeah, it's way on the end. It is under, oh my gosh, you're challenging my Roman numerals, 14, notification of policy violations. In addition, exclude must report through MDE, electronic reporting each excul-, it's actually exclusion, exclusions and expulsions within 30 days.
Within 30 days.
It was that part, yeah.
Not all discipline. The DRS report at the end of the year is what we submit annually.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And that's the report that you'll find on MDE that is typically a lag, lagging report?
Well, it's only 21, 22 right now, so it's four years old. So I was wondering if there's another report?
Well, we're in the 20s.
Well, we're in 23, 24, so it's two years old.
Yeah, so.
Year and a half, I mean, really.
So last...
Like last year's data would be good.
Last year's data would be 22, 23, so.
Well, it's 21, 22. So, so when I looked at this policy again, and I'm taking this from my parent hat and how this policy has affected me personally in our district, there's one point in this policy that I think as a district, if we were to make a change on this policy, would, could potentially have a really big impact on discipline in our district. And I'm going to go to number 10, where it says disciplinary action options. And basically what it says is that the general policy of the school district is to utilize progressive discipline. And when I read this, if I'm reading this correctly, and maybe I'm not, it says to me that number A, a student has a conference with the teacher, the principal, the counselor, or other student district personnel, and they're given a verbal warning. Then B, you go to confiscation, confiscation, I can't talk, confiscation? Basically of anything that is illegal, okay, that's B. And then number C, we then get our parent involved. And so, again, from practice in the district, I've seen this in practice. And I can tell you as a parent, I would like to be involved in A. So where it says student conference with teacher, parent, principal, counselor, because the more parents know that there's a discipline issue, then we can partner with the parents. And what I find interesting about, and also that ties back to our strategic goals, which are, and our strategic plan, which is engage students, parents, families, and community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion. So not only by including the parent in the initial conversation, and we're following our strategic plan, as well as we're partnering with the parents. So I think making that change could be very healthy for our district. And that also ties back to, can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
It also ties back, when you go to the areas of the responsibility, which is number 5, and you look at what are the parents' responsibilities, it says they are expected to cooperate with school authorities and to participate regarding the behavior of their children. And so if my expectation is to cooperate with the school authorities, then I want to know what's going on, which would be, I would need to know when something happens under A.
So I think I'm reading that one differently from what you're reading. I'm reading disciplinary action may include, but is not limited to one or more of the following. So it could be, it's not really, that's not like a progressive list of step 1, 2, 3. It's like depending on the...
But I'm telling you, that's how it's being handled in the district from my experience, both with multiple children in our district.
Well, thankfully, I mean, it doesn't read that way. So, but then it's a procedural issue. But the way it reads is it could include all or one of these things.
So would there be any harm in adding student conference with teacher, parent, principal, counselor? Because, like, why wouldn't we have it there? Like, why is parent not listed under A? Have a conference with the teacher, the parent, the counselor?
Well, I think because not, not every, like in my, this is my view, right? So not every incident would require a parent's involvement. Something minor would probably not require a parent's involvement. I'm having trouble coming up with running in the hallway.
I mean, when you look at, well, when you look at the list of things that the kids can, violations against, I'm just saying, I think most parents for the 46 things that are listed on here, what this policy applies for, I mean, I think the parent's going to want to be involved in the conference. I don't think a student would be disciplined according to the policy for running in the hallway. But when we have to follow the policy of violations for obscenity, or gambling, or hazing, or anything that fits this policy.
Well, I mean...
That's where I'm saying that...
Profanity.
But are they getting...
For talking about high school kids, I mean.
I know, but are they getting written up for that? I mean, are they having a student conference with a teacher or a principal?
Yeah, I would, yeah, they may. And depending on, you know, if I said something, or if I'm kind of habitually known to be saying something, that would be a different conversation with me as a student. So if I'm running down the hall, yeah, there might be a conversation and say, hey, you know what? You're running in the hall, and this is like first time or third time. I may say, go back, show me how you can walk down the hall. And/or I might say, you know what? One of our rules in our school is kind of respecting our learning environment and running through the hall is showing disrespect. So you and I are going to have lunch together, we're going to talk about what does respecting our learning environment look like? And again, is that major? I wouldn't say it's major. But it would be something that could technically fall under the term discipline because you're having a conference with a student around behavioral expectations. And some of them, again, there'd be a spectrum of what that would look like. So I would say it would, it would vary based upon the context, which I think our student handbooks then get more specific in terms of what happens at the elementary level, the middle school level, or the high school level.
And I would agree with the context, and I would agree with the age level of the student. And this policy is intended to cover all of our students. And it looks very different, the level of involvement as students progress through our system in terms of the student responsibility for their behaviors versus the parent responsibilities for their behavior. Particularly as we give them to the upper secondary, I'll say 7th through 12th grade. We certainly handle that differently in kindergarten through 5th grade. We certainly handle it differently in 6th, that transition year to middle school. But there is a level of responsibility that the school puts on the student. And I certainly hear the involvement of the parent. And I do agree that we want to involve our parents when students are not responding to what our expectations are. And I know that we've found great success with involving our parents in that. But we also need our students to, as they mature, take the ownership for their actions first and foremost. That's the approach.
Are there guardrails in that place? Because I can tell you from a parent in this district, if I don't know that something's happening in school with my child because nobody's telling me, how am I supposed to be at home reinforcing things like, you should be actually going to class, or you should be, or XYZ? I mean, I don't want to get too personal with examples. But I guess what is the harm of adding the word parent to A, showing our commitment to, to our strategic plan, which says we're going to engage students, parents, families, to strengthen their culture of respect and inclusion? And the only reason I'm challenging this is because if you have the same policy in place for the past, I don't know how long this has been in place, nothing's going to change. And when we have concerns with discipline in our district, you know, this policy was put in place, it says 2021, and then it looks like we updated it in 23 and 20, you know, February and July of last year for some statutory requirements because of the law.
So just to get, just to be clear, you want C moved up and A moved down?
No, I just want the word, so under A is what I'm requesting, is that student conference with teacher, parent, principal, counselor, and other school, you know? So I want the word parent in A so that it basically is saying that, and I will also say there, I think there's some confusion because I have asked...
But it says one or more of the following. So it could be A and C, it could be B and E and D, it could be, it's one or more of the following.
But it's not happening, is what I'm saying. And I know that from other experiences.
That's your personal experience.
And from other parents' experiences. So what I'm saying is how do we, as a, looking at ways where we can improve discipline in our district, I just feel like making this small change in this policy and going back and relooking at our procedures, could this be just a small thing that we can do that could have really a big impact?
Well, my concern is that if Dr. Thomas, or Dr. Edwards, or, you know, whomever teacher wants to sit down with an A, sit down with the student, talk to them about excessive profanity or running in the hallway on one particular day, that means the parent needs to be called for that too?
Well, it says or.
It says or, so it lists, you're having a student concert. So what's not happening is, the way it's written, A, student conference. They're not having a conference with their teacher, they're not having a conference with all these people. What I'm saying is that, right, but I'm saying, why is the word parent not even in that line?
Because everyone in there is in the school. That's the common denominator, so that's what separates it apart.
Parents and parent conferences are standalone entity. This is referring to whom they might speak to at a school. Parents are always going to be a part of the conversation. And I think to Director Atkinson's point, again, the 44 things here are not exhaustive. I think it says that in that paragraph, there's a ton of things that aren't here, or whatever. But parents are a conversation component to what we do to solve issues with student behavior in our school campuses. It has to be. So my concern would be if we didn't have C and D listed here as, as these are viable options. Again, A is written to reference what's happening at the school context, to not exclude parents. Quite the opposite, parents have their standalone reference here of contact, conferences, et cetera. And that, that is, that to me is critically important. So I don't think there's any disagreement from policy or from administration, parents should not be consulted, which the policy says they are one of the people that should be consulted with.
Yeah, from a, I mean, it feels pretty sound from a policy standpoint. If there's a procedural issue, you know, in your, in your experience, or anyone's really, that should be taken up at the, at the building administrator level and addressed. You know, in policy, this supports... You know, in policy, this supports, because our call out parents being contacted is an option anytime, any and every time, anytime.
Well, as a board, we are to put in place guardrails that allow administration to be able to ensure that students are to be able to learn, and discipline has been an issue. And so, and I think if you, like I said, I pulled the MDE report for MDE report for the last three years, and you can clearly see a rise in discipline issues in our district. I don't feel like that's fair data, because I'm missing the last year and a half or two years, whichever has been, you know, reported that I couldn't get off the website. So perhaps, I mean, perhaps we need more feedback from Dr. Thomas and your team from the board on what changes do need to be played, put in place from a policy standpoint for the guardrails, so that we can impact some of these discipline issues in our district.
If I'm hearing your point correctly, Director Atkinson, and now just focusing in on parents being involved in the conversations on accountability for student behavior...
Yeah, that was just one thing that I pointed out, based on the way the policy's read, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's the one thing that you pointed out, and that's the one thing I'm saying, no question, no pushback here. I think it's a procedural conversation that we need to be having, not a policy. I think the board's policy is clear, from my vantage point, that we have school staff that are consulted, we have parents that are, we have a variety of things that are listed here as conversation points. Parents are one of them. If this didn't list parents and parent contact, then to answer your question, I would say the board probably needs to put parents as a stakeholder for consultation, but they're clearly listed.
So can they be moved up, maybe? So that is, I mean, I don't know if this is in order of priorities, maybe that's not...
This is not hierarchical. What I will say is it's intended, as I read it and interpret it, it's intended to be progressive in nature.
Well, I see that, because you go to remove it from class to in-school suspension, so it does look like is, it's not stated that way.
Parent contact to then parent contact.
But it is if you read it. So that's why I don't love the fact that the parent contact is way below a number C.
So I hear, I hear that point in the progression component. And so, again, how, I'm not, we can put, we can put parents as B. That doesn't preclude me, as a building administrator, in my practice to have parents as A, or parents as F. It's going to be contextualized to the disciplinary infraction that I'm managing with that particular student. So I don't know how that would change procedure.
Yeah, so if I, maybe I can interpret, so if what I'm hearing is correct, it's, as a parent, we're going to be in the position of reinforcing what is the behavior we expect for all of our learners and our students in school, so that they're not adversely impacting the learning environment, then at least A should include notification. You don't have to call me, but just send a note, or when you bring home or send home, here's what my kid, her learner, did for the day, and by the way, we talked to him about this, we talked to her about that.
We have the parents in here, so what I'm hearing is that you want it just moved up, but it doesn't change procedure, like Dr. Thomas said, so, I mean...
Well, it could potentially, if it's moved up, they would be, if it's moved up in the policy, then procedurally, like you said, it would change the procedure. And that could have a really big impact on, you know, I just, like, as a parent, and I know other parents, I want to know if my kid's not behaving in school, and they're not doing the things they're supposed to do, and if I don't know, how am I supposed to reinforce that behavior at home? Right? I mean, so...
So adding parent in A is your recommendation?
That would be my preference, but if, if it's moving them to B in order of, you know, I guess my preference would be A, but moving it up in line of order would definitely be valuable as well.
Well, here's, sorry.
My concern would be, in practice, being careful so as not to make any student conference regarding a situation that might occur at school require parental contact. We don't have the personnel for that type of deliverable.
Doesn't do the student any favors either.
Well, if we can just stick with bandwidth, and again, on context, running in a hall compared to fighting, I think logically we would say those are two different classes of incidents, okay? I think the average person would see that. And I just, to Dan's point, I want to make sure that a hallway running incident is not necessarily going to warrant a phone call to say, Dan was running in the hall today, versus Dan, you know, beat up Michael today in school, and we had to do whatever. I just want to have that flexibility. And, and I would also say, as this is written, if I'm going to kind of extend, Director Atkinson, your question about parents in A, I'm not always calling a counselor, okay? So I think, so if I'm following the logic here around this flexibility, I would propose to the board, from a policy standpoint, that the word or is all throughout that. And this, again, is not exhaustive of every stakeholder, because then procedurally, at the school building, I have the autonomy to do what I feel is necessary based upon the context, and who I deem, whether it's parent or school staff, who I should bring into this conversation, you know? So if Lisa's running down the hall, and I see you as the principal, I may quickly go talk to your teachers, say, hey, Lisa's out here on the bathroom pass, she was running down the hall, you know, please reiterate, blah, 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 blah. I'm not going to call the counselor that you're running in the hall. I likely won't call your parent that you're running in the hall. Again, I think giving that autonomy, so if we look at sentence A differently, quite frankly...
It has or in there already.
Well, and I just think it needs to be or with each stakeholder, like, or something that shows that not every incident will require a conference with a teacher, with a principal, with a counselor, or others, I mean, they're listing this, so we can put or, parents, whatever. I mean, that's, that gives the ability to help folks understand there's multiple stakeholders here.
Can we do a poll really quick? Just because I personally am fine with it the way it is, because parent's in there, and I do believe that if we're going to have to change the conjunctions and propositions with A, just fit parent in there, and it's already in parent conference and parent contact shortly before that, if it's a concern that it's a progression, then we can put C and D right below A, and it accomplishes the exact same thing. Or we can leave it the same, because quite frankly, like you said, procedure doesn't change, nothing changes by adding these words. So, and, so in order to expedite the conversation, can we just get some feedback from other people about their comfort level, or this needs to be changed?
I think the challenge is that we...
I ask, just hold on, Director Olstad, or Crosby, or Velazquez, or Boyan?
I'll start, because my name was last. My, I would say, in reading the policy, I'm comfortable with moving parent contact and parent conference. So C and D, I would be comfortable moving them to B and C, and having the current B as the new D. Just because in reading the, in reading the policy, it does seem like it is progressive, it does seem progressive, and I think that it is, you know, discipline, it starts in the building, and so listing the building personnel, the building staff in A, that makes sense, having teacher, or, I'm sorry, having parent be next, I'm comfortable with that.
Instead, Crosby or Velazquez?
I am okay with that as well. Adding a wrinkle. A, student conference with, however we want to phrase it, to make it clear, student conference with, I put in parentheses, people at school, which people, whatever, you know, school staff, thank you, that's what I was looking for, student conference with school staff, colon, teacher, or principal, or counselor, or other school district personnel, and then B is, like you said, parent contact, parent conference, confiscation. So that A is very clear, like, first, we're going to try to handle it at school, especially if it's like the example that we're using, right, like running in the hallway, something like that, that can be handled at school. Johnny or Elizabeth has been talked to, please don't do that anymore, you've been warned, which may or may not, you know, require a note to mom and dad, or a legal guardian, right? But like, so, so yes, I agree with what Director Boyan had said, and maybe we say student conference with school staff. To make A clear, that it's like this, some things can handle in school.
Director Crosby or Velazquez?
Yeah, I agree with that, and with the change for A, I'd probably say with teacher or other district personnel, and parent that would be, which could include anyone in A or others.
Yeah, or like a parentheses or...
For example.
Yeah, the language change on A makes sense to me. I don't, personally, I think it's what, the issue that you're bringing up is relevant procedurally. I don't think that it's relevant to changing the order on this policy, but I don't, if we're in alignment and agreement and collaborating, I will work in that spirit as well.
You're okay with the moving up parent contact and parent contact?
Okay.
Because it doesn't change anything, and then with A, making it a little bit more generic, however you want to do it, and verbal warning. So do you, do we want to negotiate the language there, or just leave it up to Director Verman to create the generic...
Yeah, I like what Director...
Teacher or other district personnel.
Personnel, it leaves it quite open to whoever, you know, happened to witness this situation.
It could be a differentiation, especially, it could be a dean.
Any other adult?
Well, there's no dean listed in here, and the dean is in charge of...
It's a school staff.
School adult, school staff.
So do we want school staff, or...
And then you can put parentheses, for example, and list the real...
Okay. And then with this section, we're just going to move up C and D, and then we'll be down to D.
And I would just reiterate that, you know, oftentimes, I think with the school contacting the parent, they're going to find out, why is Johnny maybe running in the hallway? You don't know what's happening at home to Johnny, that will open up the eyes to maybe the parent and the school to be able to work together to solve the discipline issue.
And please note that we are very aligned in that, and that has been language that I have used for my entire time in this district in administrative capacity. And the conversation often with teachers is when things are happening in the classroom, and that they are brought to the office, the first question from office staff is, have you contacted family?
And while I respect that, I don't think it's being consistently done throughout our district, which is why we are seeing a rise in discipline issues. So that's why I think that reviewing those procedures as well is important to align to the policy.
Are there anything else on this policy?
I did have one small thing. Code of student contact, or conduct, excuse me.
What woman, no, no, sorry.
Eight. Yes, eight. Number thirty-two, scholastic dishonesty. I didn't know, it stood out to me when we're talking about other technologies, so it might be covered here, but do we want to add AI? Or does other technology cover that?
It'd be my recommendation to leave it as other technology, because terminology changes so quickly in technology. Right now, it's called AI, but it could quickly change to be something else. So I would recommend that we keep it to say other technology.
Let's move on to the next policy, which is five one three. That is the next one, right? Yep, okay. Do you want acceleration?
Not significant substantial changes, just changes in titles, and adding up legal guardian.
I have a question about under number three, when it's talking about kind of the steps taken in the people meeting about potential single subject or higher grade level acceleration. Is the student involved in that?
Definitely in the upper elementary and beyond years, I think that the student in the early elementary years would be involved as the parents and school staff deem appropriate. But I can speak to numerous examples in the upper elementary and beyond, that most definitely the student is involved in that. And I think that that's something that generally we want to, to the extent appropriate, particularly if a decision is going to be made to move in the direction of that, understanding from the student perspective their desires to be. And frankly, in carrying this policy out in the past as well, I've had it originated from the student, particularly in the upper middle school years. Eighth grade is the most common example, where actually parents have, that my student has been asking me to bring this forward, so I'm bringing this forward. I'm not sure I'm fully on board with it yet, but they are advocating for their needs, and been a part of those conversations formerly as a principal, and that is something that we definitely want to take into consideration.
And is that typically, or even always, at the discretion of the parent? Or not?
In those particular cases that I was, I'm speaking of, the parent has gotten to a place of support for that, whereas in early elementary years, and probably middle elementary years, well, throughout elementary, it's typically this parent is the advocate for that situation, and obviously then in full support of that, bringing that forward.
I ask Dr. Edwards because student is not listed. And I didn't, you know, it's the principal, the student's current or future teachers. And I just made a note, like, is the student ever involved? So that's why I ask, because they're not listed. And I understand your point, like, a first grader would probably have a different opinion about acceleration, say, than, like you said, an eighth grader or a tenth grader.
Yep.
And to be honest, I'm not sure where to add it or how to word it, and I could feed that to the wordsmithers.
Actually, I'm looking right now at a paragraph that I would recommend it be added, the second to last paragraph, where all the committee will meet with the parents, legal guardians, maybe, and the student as appropriate. And/or student as appropriate.
Declare by, little concerned with the and/or.
Oh, because it...
Because we wouldn't want to only meet with the student.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So parent slash legal guardian and student as deemed appropriate.
Yeah.
To this vast type of at that point.
Yeah.
Yep.
Being so close to language, thank you.
And then I also had a question, what's the timeframe usually?
where like, a request would come in, and the, you know, this small group of people meets, and discusses what, and makes a decision, like, is there a timeframe in that? Do we put something, like, we do this in a month's time, or like, does it honestly depend on the request?
It really does depend on the request. And procedurally, we would take action as quickly as necessary. Could be at the conclusion of a semester, for example, for the next semester. And it's most often for the upcoming school year, in practice. That's most often where it's.
And I wouldn't, I mean, the, the time will vary too, I'm just thinking about a situation that, based upon availability of testing, and things of that nature, depending on the complexity of the request, or where it's kind of deriving from. That would need to be completed, and so, you don't want to put a timeframe in here based upon context that could vary from student to student, family to family.
Calendar year to calendar year.
Calendar year, calendar year, yeah, but yeah, so I wouldn't advise putting procedural time into the policy.
I think that's covered in that second to last paragraph, where it talks about all the different considerations that will be to be accounted for, including logistical issues and trachea.
Any other changes or updates?
I have a question, so, my concern is with the changes that we are, with removing the advanced math program. I know parents are gonna be relying more heavily on this policy. And so, I looked at other districts' policies to try to understand, because, again, putting those guardrails in place to ensure that our community and parents know what the proper procedure is, and policy. To ensure that their kids can, you know, go into more advanced classes. Like I said, we're making a big change in our district by removing the advanced math classes in middle school. And the conversation was, it would, it would go back to this policy, five thirteen. And so, I think this policy in general lacks some content about how this policy works, about what the policy is. And when I looked at other policies, there's two policies, Edina was one of them, that had a really prescriptive flow of information on how, it's much more prescriptive than this. And then Lakeville had a nice policy that actually talked about, it included the identifying, the policy for identifying students for special, talented, and gifted, which also falls, that aligns to Minnesota State Statute 120B dot one-five. And we currently don't have a policy that is, that ties back to the Minnesota statute for identifying students for Sage, which is, again, Minnesota Statute 120B dot one-five. And so, I'm wondering if it's possible to pull this policy and go back and relook at it, to include the Sage piece of it? Because that's part of this, it's part of, you know, the identifying, as well as looking at sort of that identification process, or policy, or keeping in mind the change in the advanced math, and that more parents are gonna be relying heavily on this policy.
So, if I could just piggyback on, piggyback on that. My notes on this policy, and I looked to MSBA policy. MSBA policy five thirteen, titled Student Promotion, Retention, and Program Design. It does list that statute, and, and also another one. And I, the note that I made was that I, I like the MSBA model policy five thirteen, because it would include many types of student needs, not just curriculum acceleration. And so, my question that I had written was, could it be, would, would we want to consider that our curriculum acceleration policy, if, if that stays, that that would be like a five thirteen point one? Because there's certain things that are not listed, I think you said. So, I had similar questions, but mainly, mine was based on looking at MSBA model policy five thirteen. And that's a lot.
Yeah, the first, I think I'll tackle the Sage identification process. That certainly has been an evolving process, to my knowledge, not ever tied to policy. I think that has been a procedural process previously, and I would have concerns about tying it to policy. I'd want to see some examples that you've shared, that you've mentioned, made mention of, that we could look to and see how aligned those policies are with our procedures, to know if a policy is necessary to guide that process, my first response to that. I based upon what I have heard from the middle school specifically, with regard to the I'll call them course changes, arguably, programmatic changes. I have not heard of folks reaching out specifically to the middle school to invoke five thirteen at an increasing rate of yet. That has not been shared with me, and I've had conversations with Principal Kabushak, who everybody has been told to reach out to the middle school specifically, as students transition. And so, I do not believe based upon that, that we are not going to have the capacity. I don't believe the demand is as great as maybe it has been seen to be, or heard to be. Because it's my understanding in multiple conversations with the middle school, that those requests, once people have inquired about this change that we're talking about, they have not been bombarded at the middle school, that's my word, with a, a level of concern around that. They have been able to address.
In all fairness, you're gonna see it next year, when the kids are going through the program. I mean, this has only been announced for a month or two now, or so, I mean, that it was, or maybe it's been two or three months. But I think once they get into the learning, they're gonna rely more on heavily when, on this policy. And so, I guess my, I would recommend taking a look at Edina. What really flagged it for me was the MSBA fact. They had the Minnesota statute that ties back to gifted and talented student programs and services in a school district, which is 120B dot one-five. And I questioned, why don't we have a policy? And if we were to have a policy, it would tie into this policy right here.
So, so I pulled up that statute. It, it's, it's about as open as our policy is, and we can probably just reference it. That way, if it changes, and it becomes more restrictive, or more, you know, quantifiable, if you will, with test scores, or certain, certain thresholds, then we would adhere to that, of course. And it would be proudly good to reference it, just from that standpoint, if nothing else. I think keeping it.
To have the statute listed on here. For, for tonight. Adding the legal, the legal reference, I don't, I don't feel it's necessary to add the legal reference for the statute to the superintendency. But adding the legal reference, as for the GT student programming statute in here. And then, we can bring this policy back again, should the students and, and all of the work next year do come to fruition, warrant an additional review of this policy. But in, in the sake of getting through, through the rest of the policies we have for this year, and the doc that we have on the plate for the PAC, I would just like to recommend that we add legal reference, and then should we need additional review of this policy with the changes, bring it back forward next year. Once we have a better understanding of what that impact is at the middle school and elsewhere, to dig a little bit deeper into it at that time. Because I do feel like if that is that substantial of a change, that would be one, Dr. Edwards, that could go through the Teaching and Learning Committee first, then come to PAC, and doing a, a new review next year, if warranted, would provide more time for that. If that's acceptable?
Yep.
Okay.
Acceptable.
Acceptable.
Okay. Then, then moving on to international students. Again, some very minor changes. We did add a section at the very end. But very, very minor changes here, just some
little errors that we, we found, and cleanup that needed to happen.
Go ahead.
I have a point of clarification, if I may, Director Herman. Are refugee families part of this, or is that a separate? I understand this is like the international student, like, program.
Yes.
Do we have something separate? Refugee families that come to our district that say might not have the sixty-day notice, or like?
Ukrainian refugee families, we got.
Those would just be students.
Who would enroll in our system.
Yeah, those would just be boundary students at that point.
Okay.
That either enrolled, or if it was an open enrollment, it would fall underneath that category, but if they're new students to our district, in our boundaries, they would just follow all of their, all of their process procedures for boundary students.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, moving on to six oh one dot one, view curriculum content and alternative instruction.
This policy did go through Teaching and Learning Advisory, and some, somewhat substantive changes, particularly on page two. At the top there, providing parents with the information related to their students' courses, each level, and how we would provide that information.
I had two questions. First was under school responsibility on the second page, scope and sequence document, what is that?
So, I think we actually have updated our we have it, we're pending to update our.
Under school responsibility.
Under B, okay.
Scope and sequence, yep.
Our district website.
Yes, scope and sequence, basically, for each grade level outlines what content is being taught at that level, and what benchmark points along that continuum of the school year would be reached certain.
Thank you. My second question on the same paragraph was, for the course syllabi, is there procedure for what course syllabus includes?
Yes, it is typically the, if there's text associated with that course. The learner outcomes for that course tied to the state standards, where, where it's tied to state standards, or national standards, or local standards, depending on the course. And the, the way in which the evaluation is done, i.e. distribution of grades, whether it be writing assignments, assessments, how many, describing kind of the flow of the class, how teachers and students interact with the material, how students can get support when they are struggling. Essentially, teachers kind of laying out, here's what this course looks like, at the beginning of each quarter, for elective courses that are quarter-based. Or as students change instructors. Generally, when there are common courses like geometry, for example, there would be a common course syllabi that would, teachers would, if they have little nuances in their own classroom, they would communicate that and that. But it's generally standing, following the standard course.
And is that a district-wide, kind of, I think my question stems just as, as parent, right? Seeing syllabus, and they always look different, and not that they shouldn't. I was just curious if the district kind of has that, and you said, yes, they do.
Template.
There is a procedure.
A template, if you will, yep.
Yeah, okay, that's all, that was it, thank you so much.
So I did find this on the website, and we have updated it, and in the Teaching and Learning side. So each grade, we have this broken down in the elementary level, semester one, semester two, by content areas. So reading, phonics, writing, math, science, and what are the key units within that. So that's what we're referring to.
Thank you. Any questions related to the policy edits?
I have a question, but I'm hoping it wasn't covered out of the room. So, under the same school responsibility, A, opportunity to review materials, we state an elementary K-five scope and sequence document by grade level will be made available online, which is wonderful. And then when you skip to the, the next line, where it talks about the secondary level, six to twelve, it says the course syllabi, is it syllabi or syllabus?
Syllabi.
Oh, okay, sorry. Will be provided by teachers at the beginning of each term. Could we add available online there as well? Since we're saying it already for the elementary, and it's just saying it. I mean, because I think most teachers do put it online, but that way, it's just, it's in policy, and it's consistent with the elementary. And then, the other thing is, I believe this ties to Minnesota State Statute 120B dot two-zero parental. Is it parental curriculum review? The statute that this also, yes, because it, it talks about alternative instruction. So I believe that statute should be listed on this policy as well. One twentyB dot two-zero parental curriculum review. We don't have any statutes listed on this policy.
Anything else? Okay, going into the next one, which is fix oh three, curriculum development.
Yeah, primarily some updates in language, not, again, particularly substantial. Went through Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, excuse me, Committee for Review, and I'll just alter my edits accordingly.
And the reviews, I think we did do a bunch of cleanup, just to make it a little easier to read and clean.
Yeah, and aligned with our current model for that. And simplified it just a little bit.
Why do we have the stuff highlighted in yellow, I wanted to ask that in the definition?
That was just Google Doc editing. Things happened, so. Moving things from Word to Google Doc sometimes does some crazy things, so I was trying to get that formatting off, was not successful, but we'll make sure on the final it's not highlighted. I swear, Google Doc sometimes just likes to mess with me.
They like to be different.
So it doesn't, it, it's just changes, but it's not emphasized changes or anything, it's, it just happened to be.
On almost the last page, where it talks about the District Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, number one is membership, which is fine. But under membership, where it says the district committee membership roster will consist of, when you get to the B, C, D, and E, it does not align to our charter, specifically where we talk about D, where it talks about one elementary, one middle school, one high school teacher representative for content. I guess all the representative, I think, should just tie back to what is written in the charter. The language should be just the same to be consistent, to have consistency.
I would like it removed from this policy altogether, and put in committees. We don't have any other. We don't have any other committee and that's where it's actually governed. You can mention it here, but I'd like to, because we already mentioned the teaching and learning under committees. We go over some other requirements. But I would like to see it all in one place.
Yeah, it could reference the other policy.
Right.
Yeah. So there's 606, membership reference to 13. Then add that cross-reference at the bottom. And then it, it has to be consistent with the charter. If it's, I can't remember if it spells it out or not in there, the membership.
213.
It does.
It does?
Okay.
Well, it's another charter.
Okay.
And then yes, references the law, so.
Right.
So one, two, three, and four would be struck and it's referencing the charter that has all that information in.
Right, yeah, and that makes sense.
Yep.
Wait, I am now going to.
So under, under.
We're striking one through four.
Yep. All of that's covered in.
We're saying permanent sort of statute and policy 213.
I think that paragraph.
Yep.
Can, can hold and then that's it. And then there would be reference to, to 1, 3.
Since we had already updated 2, 1, 3 to include two board members instead of one and stuff like that.
Two-thirds parents, one possible, all left is in.
Same thing about matching the charter when we looked at that one, too.
Be done then. We're not accurate, actually.
Okay, 603.1, school district curriculum and instructional.
I want to, I'm sorry, I just have one more question about that policy and I apologize. My only question is, do we need something on there that basically says that? Because this is all about curriculum development. That the district teaching and learning advisory committee is part of that process. So if we're taking that out of this policy, does, are we taking the district teaching and learning advisory committee out of the process? I know we're not, but if it's not listed in policy, is that what I'm saying?
So we're leaving C in the paragraph there, we're just taking away.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Objective and off, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure.
So we're leaving C in the paragraph, we're just getting rid of the details of.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, so, thank you.
603 dot one, school district curriculum and instruction goals.
Dan, you want to speak to this because there's quite a bit of changes here?
Yeah, I'm probably just getting caught up here, I'm sorry.
Well, I, while he catches up, a couple of things. The, this went, the teaching and learning committee. And then the policy advisory committee. And two things that came up both committees is having to make sure that the definitions align between the, the policies so that they are the same. And then as part of their, the review, really breaking down the difference between instructional goals. Which is the goals of the, the school and then also then the student performance goals. So taking those out should be two different sections instead of having it be under one section. To make it a little bit more clear on, on the, the different types of goals that were in those sections. And then Dan, please add anything.
Yep, and as it went through teaching and learning then onto policy. I think the definitions were something that we really wanted to make sure were included. There wasn't anything in there previously. So being clear about that and then as, as Dr. Herman mentioned. We had a robust conversation, as I remember, at the policy advisory around kind of how, and actually I think that was the first one that you were in attendance at. What, what should be defined as those roles in instruction? And how we capture and organize the specifics that are listed then from A through E. Or A through D, rather.
Anything else?
Got a question about those goals, Dan, you're right, I remember the conversation. Under two with mathematical and scientific concepts. Is there, I mean, if you, content versus concepts. I know we, I remember when we had the teacher, science teacher in here and he was talking about content versus concepts. So my question is, is, is concept the right word? Where we talk, or is our goal content? I mean, I, I just, I'm not trying to be finicky, I just, I picked up on it because I think it's an important word.
Yeah. I, I think that as we have moved into our curriculum, most recent curriculum reviews in those two areas specifically. It has been about conceptual understanding. As we talked about earlier tonight around math, the depth of understanding and the concepts associated with those. Is, is primary focus. And so that aligns with best practices and aligns with standards moving forward. That would be the rationale.
So the concepts ties back to standards is what you're saying?
Yep.
And then for six, global and cultural understanding, are global and cultural, is that a repetitive word? I mean, I think of cultural understanding as being. Do you think about culture? Thought that was just repetitive.
Certainly, don't recall any conversation around that at the.
I don't remember either. Wasn't a topic of conversation at teaching.
Yeah.
Or, sorry, policy either. I mean, you can leave it, it was just, I had it literally like, just as a little signal in case someone else, another board director.
Previously, with the section made here.
You can look regionally across the US and see a variety of different cultures just pop up.
That's exactly what I mean, yeah. That's, that's why I'm saying culture is almost a stronger word than global. Because a culture is all encompassing of all cultures, Dan.
Okay, so next one, 611 homeschool. A lot of cleanup here, nothing substantial changed and then adding the legal references and cross-references. Also decided to change to say student, not pupil, since pupil is not a widely known term. And then. 612, shared time programs. Again, just some cleanup and adding a cross-references. And then the development of 612 dot one, development of parental involvement policies for Title I programs. A lot of cleanup in this one, referenced parent quite a bit. So you'll see a lot of edits, but the vast majority of it is just adding the legal guardians. And one conversation that we did have in depth with policy advisory committee is changing it to say, instead of saying a language. In, but to say using language. So that's more encompassing and not limiting to a, a language, a specific language.
Under, and this one, under B, I'm sorry, that's not helpful. Under development of so, school level policy. B, 3, D. Page 60 in your packet if you've got it or not.
Ensuring regular two-way.
Bingo. I didn't know if it would be appropriate to add any kind of reference to. Relationships with like our cultural liaisons or. Interneurs.
Yeah, I think that would be covered under school staff. Really could be all encompassing there.
Language could also be American Sign Language.
Yes, exactly. Exactly, good point.
And that's it? Okay, so going back to our agenda. Next thing on the agenda is after procedure is to go through and superintendent relations.
Yeah, just want to share that we had our last public strategic planning session. Last week or the week before.
Last week.
Was it last week? Okay. And that was probably our largest, we had about 50-plus people, maybe almost 55 individuals who came out to that. Thank you to all the staff who came, didn't know that we would need you, but we clearly needed you and we split up the room into two different cohorts, so that was really helpful. And just kind of winding down, we've had a couple of mini committee strat planning. So just sampling some of our specialized groups within our district. And so we also did one with our special ed advisory council, we did one with the teaching and learning committee. So it's been a great opportunity to get a varied perspective from our community. And many of you have come to those sessions as board members and slash participants. So looking forward to our next phase, which will be bringing that information to our core planning team. Through that co-interpretation and kind of synthesizing through all of that data. To start to solicit some of the themes that emerge and starting kind of grouping various things. And watching how that whole process unfolds. To then go back out to our community with a more fine-tooth comb on getting some clarification engagement, thematic engagement, et cetera. So just want to thank the committee for their participation. It's been wonderful to listen in on the conversations. So that's my update on our public community sessions. We'll have more ones to move into kind of phase two.
Informational items, does anybody else have anything to add? I just want to remind people that our board retreat is next Monday and the agenda should be going out tomorrow. So that's about it and we're currently working on trying to schedule the next one, which will be with Braver Angels. And we're working through some scheduling gymnastics between Braver Angels and availability of us, given the end of the year between May, June. And graduations and board meetings and strategy meetings and staff and all sorts of stuff. So hopefully we'll get a list of dates out to people fairly soon for us to choose from. And also trying to get, just trying to remind people to please respond in a timely manner because we can only hold Braver Angels for so long and so many dates. They will also be under the gun. I think that's it for informational items, does anybody else have anything else to add?
I only am smiling because the way you said that, I thought you said we do gymnastics. I'm like, I didn't sign up for that. Sorry, I just, I was smiling, I want you to know why I was smiling.
I saw my mind went to, like, wait, what? Gymnastics, oh, scheduling.
I'm glad I said that. We're getting like a, like a thing from the gymnastics team.
Team building up to.
Yeah, yeah, I got to sign up for that.
Okay. So future agenda topics, does anybody have any future agenda topics?
I have one. This, oh, go ahead. I think this kind of ties back into actually what you just said about gymnastics. I mean, I would like to see actually the conversation come to the board about what the professional development is for the balance of the year. And the reason that I state that is because the only time that professional development has been discussed was in the executive committee. And that is absolutely defined in policy 213. And I appreciate the executive committee's work in putting together some really great ideas. But I think where we missed is that per policy 203, it is the board that will schedule professional development for board members and data retreats. For district planning and strategy and sends, you know, not only. I guess I would like to see the full board's feedback on professional development for the year. Because I think every single board member on this board may have different feelings of what type of professional development is really needed to ensure that our students are our number one focus at the board table. And so I would like to see this come to our next board meeting so that the full board can have a conversation about our professional development for the balance of the year. Just like you just, I don't want to be learning gymnastics. I mean, I'll put a, I'll put a strike through that right now, I'm just kidding. But I'd like, I'd like you to have a, and for policy, the board should have a saying in professional development.
So your ask is for.
A topic to be added to the next board meeting or the full board to discuss our professional development. That we would be participating to discuss it as a total. As what, what are we bringing as ideas of what we think we should be doing.
So there wouldn't be like a template to work from, we'd all just bring ideas.
Yes, or we would have feedback on what's being presented from the executive committee because the executive committee did do the initial work. And then we as a board would give feedback on what's being presented. And that's how it's written in policy, that's how it should be, be done. And particularly since we are using district resources for these, for professional development, I also think that adds transparency for our community as well.
So are you defining professional development as like the MDE training? Because that's.
I'm defining, you had mentioned Braver Angels. And that's, I would like that conversation to come.
Speaker to come in, they're nonprofit.
I'm very clear, I've actually taken the training, so I'm, I'm clear with that. So I think since it's in policy where it says that the board will schedule professional development for board members. I think the conversation needs to come to the board table.
So any comments on that? Because I'm not quite sure what that means, but the, the board chair and the co-chair usually schedule the agenda in the meetings. But would anybody have any comments or? I'm not quite sure how to do that, to tell you the truth, because I, Dr. Crosby, I was, I had the same thing. Like how do we do that? Do we just throw out ideas?
I mean, I could tell other districts do it. I mean, that's exactly what other districts do.
Or don't, and most of the time we have each board member decide what they want to sign up for. On their, their own professional development and then the retreats are agendas for the entire board. And that's built by the, by the executive committee, then the chair and the co-chair.
Yeah, no, I thought it's, it would be like an offshoot, so we all do the annual survey. Evaluate your superintendent, then there's also the board survey so that we can see how we're performing. And could see the professional development or the board development as an offshoot of, well, what do we collectively say in terms of where we're deficient or what we want to keep on growing. Here or next term.
Are you suggesting we add it to the survey to get everyone's input that way? Which actually sounds kind of good.
Yeah, or even looking at whatever the aggregated data is that comes back from the survey. Says here's how we as a board feel that we're performing. And we target some of the specific areas.
So you were tracking exactly where I was tracking with this? The issue with the way the board evaluation is scheduled is that it's only annually? And so just like we did a mid-year review with, for Dr. Thomas. That actually was on my number third bullet point is, should we be doing a mid-year board evaluation? A mid-year review for our board? Right, I don't know if MSBA fits that model, but then that's where it ties back. And I don't want to get into the weeds, my biggest issue was, you know, does the full board. does the full board have alignment that we should be having a Braver Angels workshop that is using district resources, where many of us have taken it already? And so I don't want to get into that here, because I would like that to come to the full board table for a discussion and a vote.
So I hear that we have Director Acton asking if we want to have a discussion on whether Braver Angels should come or not.
So, no, that's not, what I'm trying to say is, per policy, it says that the board will schedule professional development. So it is a board conversation and a board decision, not an executive committee decision. The executive committee is to bring ideas together and present them to the board. That's the way our policy is written. So if we haven't done that in the past, I'm recommending, that just because we have done it in the past doesn't mean that this is how we should do it. Because I do remember my first year, I didn't really agree or feel that a couple, I didn't feel that several of our professional developments, they were more based on adult behaviors and how we work together as a, as a board versus focusing on how can we improve student outcomes, which is what we sit here and do, and what we're elected to do to serve our committee, is to assure that our students are getting a quality education in our district. And so I think that there's different ways of looking at professional development. And in order for us to have a more robust conversation about that, I ask for it to go to a board meeting for full board discussion.
And past practice has just been that the chair and vice chair have built agendas around board development. And that, I mean, that's, doesn't mean it's right.
Well, it doesn't follow policy, yeah, it doesn't follow policy either.
Well, it's the agenda for the meeting, which includes how we can more effectively work together to service student outcomes. And sometimes it has been, by the way, about student outcomes, too. So let's just, do we want to take a study session time to discuss professional development for the board? Anybody thumbs up? Okay, next topic, anybody? Want to go again?
I have one more, but you can go ahead.
No, go for it.
We did not have a January town hall or a February town hall for budget presentations. So my question is, when is that going to happen?
We actually moved the January one to November, so it came earlier. And our other, we have not scheduled a spring town hall until we landed on where we had the budget conversations a couple of weeks ago with the board. And so now we are prepped to be able to do some type of town hall presentation, as I'm doing those with schools right now. So that's something that we'll look to schedule for the spring. And again, that timeline is a draft, I believe that's the one that's on your website. It's not written in stone that this will happen. Again, we wanted some flexibility based upon the budget this year, so we did some earlier, and we'll do one later on in the spring.
Any ideas for, any more topics for board, Director Bullion?
I had one just regarding class sizes. It has been, that has been a topic that has been brought to my attention a lot lately, which, and then it was just kind of affirmed when the, one of the teachers discussed it as a concern, a challenge. And given the, so I just, I'm wondering if we could have it as a future agenda item. Something on class sizes, whether it be even something at our upcoming board retreat when budget is discussed. Because given the forecast going forward, you know, manageable class sizes are fundamental to success with students and teachers. And so I'd just like to understand where we're at currently. I know that in some of the budget cuts, we're talking about right sizing, class sizes, having some leeway there. What, having an agenda item to maybe discuss where we really are at, where we want to go. Kind of talking about the guardrails thing. When I think about even referendum talk, there's been, whether it be tech levy or things like that, I'm wondering if there's some, there's room for discussion about if the appetite for class size in our community is enough where. That is something that parents and community members get around. I don't know, but it is just something that has been brought to my attention by several different areas. And so I'm bringing it here as a possible future agenda item to.
So a deep dive during a study session on the class sizes, impacted class sizes, et cetera.
Yeah, where we're at, where we want to go, you know.
Yeah, I don't know if the board needs to vote on that, because it's a natural conversation between Tammy and Emily that we'll give those staffing ratios and where we're at based upon our enrollment projections and what that looks like in terms of our averages. So that is something that we present to the board each year in our budgeting process, so that information will be coming.
Okay, so. I'm good with, I'm good with that, it's just, you know.
It's a big conversation as I'm doing my school tours as well.
Yeah.
And it's something for us to be mindful of as we're facing cuts.
Yeah, you know.
Because it's about decisions and priorities.
Director, we're going to a discussion with the Board Director China, Educational Outcomes.
Director Frederickson, you said like R5A tonight, that's going to be a standing agenda item. Our program and staffing reductions additions discussion, I mean, that's going to be a standing agenda item, correct?
Yeah, as we move forward and kind of finalize where we're going to make reductions here.
Anybody else on ideas or topics? Hearing none, we are going to adjourn for the evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.